There's lots of people.
How much did you tell me?
Want to say we were fifty two. Now we're fifty nine.
We were fifty two, five, seven, ninety nine.
Fifty oh five. So we weren't very. That's seven times. What proceed you just want?
We don't do that.
But I'll bet you, I'll bet you five.
You didn't, and you're. Square eight.
I don't want any more either.
Of the worst ones. They are. Okay. I think. Now like this. Well, y'all missed, y'all missed one, two hours. Oh my Lord.
Was it behind door number one?
Oh. Oh my God, I've already, I've already apologized to Jennifer. I said, I'm sorry for making your day miserable.
That's why when she walked out, she's like, oh my.
They're all stirred up now, so. Yeah, we just made Jennifer's life miserable for today. Oh, not y'all, not on y'all. But they're primed, but, but they're primed.
I'm gaining.
Yeah, he's gaining.
Just people though.
Are you getting that road?
Nope. Just people.
Now, the road, the road, well, I guess the road deal was between Keith and Chad and Virgil. Seven thousand. Yeah, we went up seven thousand. Where you're, you can just, you, by, by first year, you just call it sixty.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
So I'll go ahead and call the workshop to order. Uh, for the commissioner's court, we is in November the third, twenty twenty one, eleven, six, le- eleven seventeen. Uh, this workshop. Forum is established, all members of the court here, uh, no public comments. Uh, this workshop for Grant Works Project Meeting for the ARP meeting, uh, money. We received ten, ten million, nine hundred and ninety something. And so. Uh, but Mr. Bass gonna join us by Zoom around eleven thirty, he's in a meeting now. But I wanted to meet with you guys, we need to sit down as a commissioner's court and see what direction. And we'll talk to him when he comes in, what direction are we going to go, we, it's time, we gotta figure out what you gonna spend your money on. Uh, and we'll talk to him, what is y'all's thought, we gotta come to consensus as a court. It will, it will, and we won't be taking any action in this workshop, but we need to get some kind of direction as to where we're going. Is there anything you want to add to that, Miss Hill, just where we're at, what we're doing? Uh, I know there's a lot of discussion about, okay, are we gonna have to make it mandated that everybody, mandatory vaccinations? I think that's been established, no, we're not gonna have to do the mandatory, we can confirm that with him. Okay, I think we can confirm that with, with him.
We've got something from Allison and him also saying, no.
It don't, no fly to this, I think we're good there, but. You know, there's been discussions, I know Sandy had sent a list down to Mr. Bass. Uh, of what all our discussion had been up to this, you know, there's been, we've had several nonprofit organizations ask for money. The water departments have asked for money, but you heard him say. In that meeting, that if you give the money to the water departments. And then it's not spent or it don't get approved, that it's the county on the hook, not the water department, because the money went to the county. So. I guess that's where, you know, they said broadband, it's listed, I think our discussion here has been. And she, well, let me back up, Sandy and them have been working on the lost revenue. Formula, I think y'all says in on the meeting on that, that money can be spent for anything. I mean, is that correct, there's no?
There's not as many limitations.
Not as many, yeah.
And that's what I think we're gonna have to visit with him this morning about because. When he began to talk to Mr. West and I about this new bill. The S three oh one, which I, I pulled the bill this morning for trying to read it. I'm not so sure it's not replacing the revenue calculator. And you're saying your loss is ten million dollars.
Every county?
Well, it's, it's ten million or a thirty percent of your loss. If it the first, it's ten million for every county, and then the counties that got larger, it's thirty percent of your loss.
Well, that throws a whole new, that just throws everything out.
Because if you read what NACO put out, it said, um. This, the deal will allow counties to allocate up to ten million of recovery funds for government services. And to ten million or thirty percent of the total allocation, whichever is higher, for highway and transit projects and to address and. So, you know, it's gonna, it could possibly put some of the money into roads.
Yeah, and I think that's what, and that was my question to him the last time we had. Is that's exactly what happened to us with the cares money, this is what the money can be spent for right here. And then as you progress through the process, it changes, and I think we're seeing it change right now. I don't, I don't, and that's what we're gonna have to clarify with him about the roads.
The revenue calculator that I started calculating was, uh, nine hundred and ninety one thousand dollars. And we did. He did, we're gonna have to go back, I've got to go back, and. I had the debt service property tax coming in, because I was taking my fingers straight from the, uh, the tele audit. And I emailed him and he said, we need to pull up the.
But there's not much, not many dollars involved in that or.
Well, it's got to be in every year, but it actually embraces it, when I took those dollars out, it put it to about an eighty four.
That we have in the, yeah, in the law, yeah.
Yeah, and that can be spent for anything.
Well, that's, well, that's what I thought, but now they're saying.
There are some guidelines, but not nearly as strict as what, uh, the rest of.
And I asked him, I said, in my mind, I thought we could try to check the county out of that fund and we'll begin the general fund.
Yeah.
No, you have to steal budget that money through that ARP.
Oh, good, good, yeah.
You don't take it out.
But it is possible for some of those roads.
Yes.
We, I will possibly.
Yeah, I'm hoping, yeah.
About eleven million would make us the difference out of the general fund.
They are, but yes, that money, my understanding, that money right there, one point three, should be spent towards.
Most things, most.
Well, the mansion is road one up.
Yeah, okay.
How, what'd you say, how much money?
One point three, yes.
That's a, that's a, that loss calculation.
That, that one point three of the minimum of ten.
One point three of about S R loss.
But what'd you say, what go with, so everybody's gonna get ten thousand?
Ten million.
I mean, ten million.
No. No, not everybody's getting ten B.
But you, if you're over ten, you can't, you just get to use ten, isn't it? She's saying, and that's one thing we're gonna have to get clarification on from him, he has. Can, if you, if you get ten million, can you use ten million for anything? Or if you get more than ten million, it says max thirty percent, the ones that's got.
Fifty, fifty million.
Thirty percent.
It's ten million or thirty percent, whichever is higher.
So we'd have, we'd have thirty percent of the, of the seventy five pounds, seven hundred fifty pounds?
I would think.
And then.
We have ten million.
We got ten million, and I think the max would be thirty percent, but I need clarification. But.
I don't think we have anything on the first ten B. After what, I don't think it, I don't think the thirty percent applies to the first ten B, does it?
You don't allow?
It's ten million or thirty percent of your loss, whichever is greater.
Which is great.
So we do ten million, that's our loss.
Yeah, that, that, I mean, so we got it. And that's what makes this so difficult, is we never know what rules we're playing by.
Well, it depends on what we.
It depends on, yeah, that.
And, and so, so out of that ten million, it's, it's, it would be like the radio system, if we did, it would be included in that. We'd pay for it out of the ten million.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can pack to your radio system and then whatever left out of it, you could, I think he's gonna tell you.
So that's why, what we, we've discussed radios. Radios is a deal, when nine one one hit. Radio, the state of Texas come and said, you, you are going to, and they told us, where's the, I mean, over at JP, they said. You buy a certain date, I forgot what date they give us, by a certain date, you're going to go to the P twenty five, so whatever. They wanted everybody to communicate statewide. Well, then they started backing off of it. They couldn't, couldn't do it, I mean, it's so massive, you don't have the money, you don't have the money. And so then they started backing off, and here we are, what, twenty years later? Twenty years later, we're still not there, and, but we're gonna have to go there. I mean, it, it, at some point in time, Van Zant County is gonna have to go. To a radio system, that where they can communicate with Coffin County, Smith County, Henderson County, uh, the surrounding counties. I don't understand, and, and, and I'm not law enforcement, why do we have to have law enforcement that's in Austin? Able to communicate with Van Zant County by right? I don't, maybe y'all can tell me, I don't know.
But when's the frequent change that's coming in? That's the, the frequency radio change is gonna, is mandated by the federal communication, and it's, how many more years has it got before it comes into effect, Ted? I don't know, that timeline has been bumped back twice now, but it's coming.
It's coming.
And so. And we can build a system that don't talk to Austin, we don't have to go that.
Yeah, and so, my deal is, if you're gonna spend, if you've got this money, and you spend it on your radio system. Or broadband, or whatever. Not broadband, but the radio system, that's money the taxpayers are gonna have to spend at some point in time anyhow. So you have an opportunity to do it now, with this money.
How about, how about voting material, like new equipment for voting?
I know, that'd be a question for him. Yeah, that'd be a big question for him. Like voting machines?
Yeah, because with that one, you know, the big machine, the six hundred, it's a loner right now, because ours is down, and they're not sure if they can fix it.
Well, in the twenty twenty six, till everything's gonna have to change in the voting?
We're, we're actually in compliance, because the only thing that needs to change is because a lot of the new equipment that people have bought. Are papers.
Right.
We have papers, so we're, we're okay with that, we're compliant, and the new stuff that we're looking at will also have been balanced, the new balance.
I would always push, and I know Lance, Lance Lim is big on that.
Yeah.
Always have some, uh, uh, a paper.
We're looking at, i- if the future holds, you know, it depends, but, um, we went over to Coffin County, I went and tested their machines, how they do it and everything, it's pretty much about on demand, it's paper, it's, it's very good. It saves money ordering ballots, and we want to keep it on demand and it prints in that board, so, so she can go. I think so.
About where you go, you get a ballot.
Correct.
I would also like to spend money on our jail, to update the jail. Uh, to convert the, uh, minimum security into maximum and connect that together, that, that's important to me. Because we're, we're growing, and when you grow, you got more people, it's gonna be, I mean, that's just, it's the.
The what? Okay, you bring him on in.
Well, the radio system, the initial shares we're working on, standing system that works for our county, and now be able to talk on, in the counties around us. So they'll have communication, where they're pretty much does their job.
Hello, everyone, William Bass here with Grant Works.
Can you hear us, Mr. Bass?
Yes, sir, line clear.
Okay, good, good, is there any way you can lower your screen down where we, we, we can see you from mouth up?
Yeah, hold on a second. My windows are getting all convoluted, there we go.
There you go, there you go, thank you, sir. Yeah, we, we did call the meeting to order about eleven fifteen.
Okay.
We've been, we've just been discussing, I think, I don't think we could move forward without you answering some questions for us.
For sure.
What, what, what thing we need clar- clarification on is the ten million dollars? The, or thirty percent, whichever is greater? Are you familiar with that?
No, if you could, yeah, give me a few more details on that, I'll top my head now.
It's the, it was, the what?
S thirty eleven bill.
S thirty eleven bill?
Oh, yeah, the new bill, the correct, yeah, yeah, I was, funny, I was just sending, uh, communications out, um, to all the communities that I'm.
Uh-oh, froze up. What might get your faces?
Project managing, and I was just about to say, so that, that's definitely, you know, a game changer, um, I know there was a question, I'm not sure if it was from you, sir, or another county commissioner, you know, in regards to the cares act, you know, will the allowable of funding categories change? And, you know, John Cornyn and, and I forgot who else, what other individual introduces bill, but they, this, you know, most likely will pass the house and, and will allow for. Uh, you know, broader use of allowable projects, so, um, yeah, this is definitely a game.
Okay, it was, it was me, because we got into it, and I, I referenced the cares money, as we started that, we started through it, it kept changing. And so, when we met with you last time, I asked you, do you see this changing, or is this what we're looking at? And you said, well, I, I can't answer that right now.
Yeah.
But this is exactly what we get into every time, is, this is what you can spend your money for. Well, for a month or so, and then it changes, and so, I guess.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, just, just, if I could interject on that note, the, in terms of what we can, what the allowable projects are, it will never become more restrictive. So it won't be like, oh, you can do roads, you know, now, and then six months from now, oh, you can't do roads anymore, so. Whatever projects, whatever criteria that we're working with at the moment, will definitely hold true in that. Going forward, the only thing that will change is that it, it might become more expansive, like the case with this SB three zero one one, so. The, there, we don't need to worry about if we start on something that's allowable at one point in time, it will be just allowed at, at a future point in time, that will definitely not be the case, the only. It will only go the opposite direction, there will only be more, um, more opportunities and more freedom to, to pursue, uh, different projects, there won't be more restrictions.
Okay, so just let me just go ahead and ask you, can the money be spent on roads? That's the same look I gave.
I think that's a no answer.
You froze, you froze up, I don't know if you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm definitely getting up to speed on SB three zero one one, um, in terms of what we can do with it, I think it's, you know, studying it and becoming an expert on it, oh, I go there, go there. Check, check.
We hear you.
Okay, sorry, I apologize, yeah, there's like crazy rainstorm going on in my area, so my head is kind of being a little wobbly. So, yeah, I'm pretty sure we can do roads, um, you know, it says that, uh, in terms of the amount, let me get the specifics to you, I'm, you know. As with everyone, I'm just getting up to speed on SB three zero one one, um, in terms of, um, what it allows for in, in terms of those new categories, so. Um, you know, we're all scrambling to, to, to get up to speed on it, so I'm pretty sure we can do roads now. We could do roads previously, um, however, it was limited, the amount we could do on roads was limited to, um, the calculation that, um, we did, and I've gone over that with Sandy a little bit in terms of revenue loss. Um, but now, there's kind of a, a, I believe, a, a granted revenue loss figure, that's just for, everyone gets to use this certain amount of money. So I'm pretty sure we can do roads, um, let me, you know, get back to you all, um, get back to you all in terms of the amount of money. Um, that can be spent on roads in any, um, further stipulation, so let me take that down in my notes here.
Okay, and let me ask you about, uh, Van Zant County's in dire need of new voting equipment, uh, voting machines, uh, voting, uh, election equipment. Would that be covered?
New, sorry, I'm checking that, new voting machines and election equipment, I'll have to check on that, on that one, I have not seen, um, a- anything in the interim final rule or SB three zero one one yet regarding that. Um, I know, you know, the spirit of this, uh, art funding is to, um, address, you know, the effects of the pandemic. Um, but I will definitely look into that and, and get back to you here soon regarding that, I would say off the top of my head, no, but that's not my final answer.
Okay, okay, and I think we're, uh, jail expansion, I, I believe that would be covered, would it not, I believe it would.
Yeah, so that, that would definitely be capital infrastructure, um, that's a tentative yes on that one, I'm gonna give you, gonna come back to you with the final answer on that.
And then a radio system, uh, uh, new P twenty five radio system for the county for first responders. Wouldn't that be covered?
Yeah, that's a, again, a tentative yes, I would say a tentative yes on that one, because, you know, the EMS is actively responding to the COVID nineteen crisis. Um, so, but, um, yeah, these answers I'm gonna give you right now are, are for sure, um, tentative, and I, I definitely wanna, um, come back to you with, uh, research and, and, and quotes and sources essentially. Um, for why this would be a yes or no, so these are my tentative answers at the moment. I have, I'm taking these down in my notes for like.
Does anyone have any questions? So what do we need, uh, what, what do we need, uh, Mr. Bass? Do we need to narrow down what we want to spend the money on, I mean, it's, it's hard to know what we won't spend the money on, when we really don't know what's gonna be allowed.
Correct, yeah, so, you know, we have those, um, there's allowable category, what's allowed so far, um, that I presented to you. Through you all in my presentation, and you have in those PowerPoints in terms of those categories, so that's a framework just to, to think, a framework to think within. Um, but also this SB three zero one one, um, I'm gonna get up to speed on this, um, as, as it is, as it is for sure, uh, breaking news. Um, and, and add that to, um, the framework that I'm, I'm gonna send that over to you guys, um, because that's another framework. Um, so, in terms of how we move forward with this project selection, you know, you, you all, Van Zant, will have those two frameworks, what's in SB three zero one one and what was in originally in my, you know, presentation. And then, you guys will, um, come up with a, a tentative project list, and then I will. I will, we'll, we'll narrow that down, and I will give, uh, a sort of a green light, um, and also quote, you know, the sources, uh, in terms of these allowable projects. Um, that we will select, and then we'll, we'll take them from there, so, um, yeah, just kind of a, a joint process between you all. Um, coming up with a, a shortlist essentially of, of projects, and then me, um, kind of researching and, and. Finding the justifications and the sources, um, in with, from, in the information that I have from the government, and then. You know, we come back and then go green light essentially that the project's from said list, does that make sense?
It does, and you will give us green light on those projects?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, I mean, the green light, y'all involve me, um, uh, you know, again, going into the documentation that we, I have from. The Treasury Department and, and writing up the justifications and the expenditure categories, and, yeah, basically saying, basically. In writing and with sources saying, these projects are allowable, this is why they are.
Okay, okay, are we looking at a time frame?
Um, yeah, that's a good question, um, it, it basically is fast or is slow as, as you all, um, want to move, um, like I mentioned, the project. This, uh, ARP money still, as far as I know, still, you know, I'm not all up, I'm gonna, again, study up on SB, uh, three zero one one, and if it touches the, the timeline, but at the moment, the timeline for obligating the funds is. December thirty first, twenty twenty four, and the, the timeline for having it all spent is December twenty, uh, thirty first, twenty twenty six. So those are the high level timelines that we're working with, um, so we can move as fast or as slowly as we want to, um, with those deadlines in mind, so. Um, again, you, you guys have that, the, the presentation that I did, um, a week and a half ago with you all, in terms of, yeah, those guidelines for thinking about projects, and then. I'm gonna get you all the information, um, as SB three zero one one is, is finalized and comes through, in, in terms of how that adds to and expands upon, um, what we can do. Because, you know, as you mentioned, roads is, is definitely an infra, more broader infrastructure, um, is definitely in there, it's just, the question is, is how much money? Um, can we spend, of the money, can we spend on that infrastructure, so.
Okay, and I know there's been discussion on, uh, the mandated vaccinations.
Yeah, correct, so I, I verified with, uh, the ARP directors on my team, um, so, and, uh, Sandy referenced, um, what was listed on NACO's website. Um, in regards to that particular executive order, and NACO's website says, no, ARP recipients are not, you know, are not government contractors and are not subject to that particular executive order, so. We can, that, that information on NACO's website, and in regards to the executive order that says no is correct.
Okay, okay. Any questions?
I do have a question, okay, Chad, can you hear Chad?
Yep, hey, John.
When we decide, hey, we're gonna go on project A, and we tell you this is the direction we're going, how long will it be before we actually reach a point where we're awarding the contract and start work?
Um, I would say probably a couple of weeks to a month, you know, we do need to go through the RFP process, oh, sorry, RFQ process, and putting out the notice and, you know, soliciting for, uh, uh, requests for qualifications, and then going through a scoring process, you know. In terms of construction projects we're speaking of here, um, and then, you know, we need to get the, go through the environmental, um, review process, um, here internally at Grant Works, in terms of, you know, having what per, having researched. Our team having researched what permits are needed, so we can have that over to engineers, so I would say on average, probably about a month, um, between, um, starting that RFQ process, um, and then. you know, going through the scoring process of selecting an engineer.
Now, if project A requires construction or building, do we have to hire someone else to get all that done before we go for RFPs?
Okay. Could, could you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
I said, if the, if project A requires construction building, we have to hire some, uh, architect or an engineer to design it out prior to going to RFPs?
Exactly. Yeah.
Process take to hire the engineer and get him on board going.
About, about a couple, about three weeks to a month, I would say.
So we've got a month to pick the person to design it. Then we got a month to get it through the RFP process and we still got to have along it takes them to design it in the gap. So we're probably three months if we decide a project before actually awarding the contract.
Correct. Yes.
Any, Sandy, do you have any question? Michelle? Anyone?
Do we need to continue with that, uh, cap revenue calculator or do we just need to stop?
Yeah. Yeah. Is, is that a question from Sandy?
Yes.
Hi Sandy. Um, yes. Yeah. Let's, i- if you could, um, finalize those numbers that we have in there, um, just so we have that in as a resource. Again, I'm not e- exactly sure at this very moment how the SB three zero one one changes that lost revenue. I'm pretty sure, again, this is not my final answer on this. I'm pretty sure it allot everyone a certain amount, um, of lost revenue. Um, I think that's ten million. Um, I think they just say everyone has a lot of revenue of ten million right now. So we can use that towards, um, uh, infrastructure projects. But let me check on that, um, Sandy. Um, cause yeah, that, I think the SB three zero, yeah, let's actually, let's, uh, in re- just to respond to your answer, Sandy, let's pause on that. Um, and let me review the SB three zero one one because I think, I think it establishes a ten million dollar minimum for everyone, um, as lost revenue. So everyone has up to ten million dollars in lost revenue that they can use as, um, towards, uh, more broad infrastructure projects.
Okay. Cause our, our allotment was right at, it was ten million. So it was right at eleven million. So you're saying, if I understand you correctly, you're saying, okay, you've got ten million that you could spend for.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm, I'm pretty sure that's the case. Again, I'm not, you know, fully up to speed on this bill yet, but as far as I've, I've, I understand so far, um, it, it, it says everyone has, we don't need to do the revenue loss calculator. Everyone has ten million that they can use towards, uh, more broader infrastructure project.
Okay.
But, um, yeah, so that this, again, this information is, is, is developing and it's, it's breaking. Um, so I, I'm going to be communicating, um, to you all, uh, at Van Zant as, as it, as it develops and how, um, as it solidifies also, because it will definitely, um, change the game in terms of how we can think about, um, using these funds.
Okay.
One other question I had, sir, back to what I asked before. So as far as engineers and architects and services like that, that's paid for out of the grant as well?
You're correct. Yeah. The grant money goes towards that. Yeah. Engineer, the hiring of the engineer, you know, the, the, any environmental reviews that need to take, take place, all of this ten million dollars goes towards that.
Yeah. When we, uh, present the engineer's facts and specifications to you, you don't question those, do you? You just award the money on those specification?
Uh, yeah. So there's a, there's a, a scoring process that you all at Van Zant will go through to determine the engineer that, that, that you want to work with.
Oh, okay. So I believe it would be beneficial for Vansack County at this point to come up with a, uh, number one project, number two, number three, get a rating. Okay. This is our number one, two and three. I mean, I don't care if you go to five.
Yeah.
Top five projects.
Yeah. Top five projects with a kind of a ballpark estimate on those, you know, just so we can know, you know, we're not at seven projects and they're all two, two, uh, you know, two million each and they're at fourteen million, but we only have ten million. So just kind of a rough, a rough estimate. And then as we get in, move into the projects, you know, the estimate will be more, um, solidified. But so, yeah, just, just a, the, a shortlist with those, a shortlist of the projects and a kind of a description of the projects, um, along with the, a rough estimate.
Okay. And when we, when we met with you the last time, you said you would like to have a meeting approximately over two weeks?
Yeah. Does that, does that work for you all?
Well, it, it does. It's just the scheduling of it is difficult. Uh, because right now we've got, I mean, we're, we're in redistricting. We've been meeting since nine this morning. And, uh, we, we've got a lot of stuff going right, right now.
Hmm.
And we've got, there's a lot of meetings that we're trying to work it into, you know?
Yeah, I know. I understand, sir. Yeah.
Our, our HR, we just lost our HR director. So we're going to have to go into meetings with that. Uh, this meeting, the redistricting meeting and we're, you still believe it's beneficial to meet about every two weeks?
No, I know. I mean, I, I mean, it sounds, I don't want to take up too much of your time. And I know everyone, everyone already has enough meetings on their plate. So, you know, we can do, we can, we can, you know, we, there's plenty of other channels of communication that we have through, through email, um, et cetera, or just any phone calls. You have my phone number. So we can do every three weeks, um, if that works for you guys.
Okay. We'll do every two, three, four, just kind of. Okay. Any other questions? So how many questions? Sandy? So I guess what, what the county needs to do is figure out what they want to spend the money on.
Yeah, exactly.
Researching it.
Yeah. And then I'll, 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 um, I'll send you over the, the kind of high level information, um, that we're communicating out to, to our communities regarding SB three zero one one. Um, and then as the, when the bill passes and then there's further information distributed from the government that offers more details, um, we'll all share that out with you also. But I think the information that we have right now, um, regarding the bill, um, definitely gives us a, 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 a good broad frame of mind in terms of thinking about allowable projects. Um, and, um, yeah.
Okay. So if we, if we come up with a top three project and said, okay, this is what we, this is what we're looking at. But we know it's not going to take all the money, but if there's extra money left over in there, then we could spend it on infrastructure like roads. Like, let's say we want to go with the, with the, uh, the, uh, uh, radio system. New communication for, for first responders. We want to go with that. Uh, we got, we got the jail expansion and everything. Here's what we're looking at. But so let's move forward with that. And then after we get that come, I don't know at what point, I don't know if you'd wait until it got completed or.
Yeah. Or, yeah, either one, either one, either completed or that we have, you know, the exact, the exact estimates in, you know, so that we can, you know, know how much exact money we have left. So, yeah, either one, again, as long, the timelines are, are pretty flexible, um, in terms of starting and beginning projects. Um, yeah, the only limitation that we're working with it, it has to be obligated by twenty twenty-four. So.
Twenty twenty, oh.
Twenty twenty-four, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Okay.
So either those, either those, uh, approaches will, will work.
Okay.
In terms of, you know, are we going to begin, say we have, uh, three projects that we just really want to start with. And then, you know, we're moving through those and then we have the, um, the exact estimates of those. So we can know, we can pick that out of our budget and how much we have left for remaining projects and then proceed from there or wait until those, those, uh, projects are completed, either one.
Okay. Don't have any other questions? Don't have anything?
No.
We were looking at on the project list, we've had Karen and the district clerk converting her files to energy.
Right.
Is that something we should consider?
Did she get money? Grant money from that? She's got a bunch of money in the budget to do that.
Who? Is that all Susan?
Yeah.
Yeah. That would be covered. Yeah. And what, and it, and it's Sandy talking about our district clerk preserving the files uh, on, online where they could, you know, uh, I guess what you call it. I would say scanning or.
Well, the, the scanning can be scanning.
Say, scanning and indexing the files where the public could access.
You, yeah.
And that, and you've already said that, that's, that would be, that probably could be approved.
Oh, hi- hiring a person to do this?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. I mean, a, an, any, any person that's, you know, their primary duties. We can use that ten million to pay them for sure.
We have a co-file, which is already a cooperative purchase through the state. They already have that free bid and everything.
Oh, could you repeat the, uh, could someone echo?
Okay. She's, she's, uh, who, what company? Uh, we already have co-file that we've contracted with to do that, which is a part of the.
Part of the cooperative purchasing the state.
Part of the cooperative purchasing with the state already.
You don't have to go out for bids.
You don't have to go out for bids.
That's a good question. Does this grant make us go out for bids?
Does this, does this grant make us, require us to go out for bids?
It does require us to go out for bids. Correct. Yeah. We do have to follow two CFR two hundred, um, which is, um, the kind of general procurement guidelines, um, from the government and they, they, they can get pretty, they are pretty specific. Um, so yeah, we do need to go out for bids.
Okay.
The sheriff asked for, uh, government scanning for old rest centers also.
And. Yeah. He said, uh, Scott's saying the sheriff asked for what? Scanning. Yeah. He's wanting to scan old criminal records and everything. Uh, through the sheriff's department, which would probably be allowed, but you'd still have to go out with, with the bidding process?
Yeah, correct. Yeah. There's, I mean, certain stipulations of, you know, certain clauses in two CFR two hundred and it, if you do have to go out for bids, I mean, we can use single source procurement. Sometimes if there's, if there's a specific thing that we're looking for and only one person has it, et cetera, et cetera. So u- usually we have to go out for bids, but you know, there can, you can get around it sometimes, um, you know, using single source procurement. So, yeah, it's just, it's kind of a, a little bit of a maze that we have to navigate, um, but it's definitely navigatable.
Okay. Yeah. You couldn't just go out and use byboard or something like that.
You know, we are, uh, that's a great question. We, you know, another community I am working with, they're members of HGAC byboard. Um, I don't know if that's the specific one, um, that you're, uh, a member of, but, um, I'm working with them. You know, they, they claim on their website to be two CFR two hundred compliant, but I'm meeting with them tomorrow, um, to go over, um, how they do some of the procurement steps, um, to double check. Um, if you could let me know of the, the specific byboard that, um, you referenced there, sir, um, that I could work with them. Check.
Houston, Galveston.
Okay. Yeah, that's HGAC.
Yeah, not with Karen. Oh, what, what would you say? What'd you say? Houston? I don't know. We just have, we just have to chase.
Okay. Yeah. Let me know. Um, cause I know there's some different cooperatives, um, in, in Texas. I'm not sure how many, but, uh, definitely, you know, w- want to get with them and, and check if that's an option. Um, you know, because folks are, different communities are members of that and they do want to go through that. Um, but again, you know, my role here is to, is to ensure, um, compliance, um, and, and, you know, cover all of our, our bases in terms of, uh, you know, compliance and making sure we're following all of the rules issued by the Treasury Department in terms of the spending of this money. So I'm here to ma- make sure we're, we're toeing the line.
Yeah. And, and, and I, I just summarize it as Mr. Bass, keep me out of trouble.
Yeah. Keeping you all out of trouble.
Don't let me make a mistake.
Yeah.
Sandy always says, if I go to prison, she gonna bring me cookies. Yeah. Is there any other questions for Mr. Bass? Well, thank you, sir, for joining us. I know it was a short notice.
No, absolutely.
But I mean, you, but you've been in meetings this morning, but thank you for joining us.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll send you over the SB three zero one one information here shortly.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Y'all great. Goodbye.
So let me ask you guys, uh, what's the number one project? Is radios the number one project?
I think that probably would be the number one project.
I mean, I don't want to spend all the grants. That's right.
Radio.
That, that, that's right. Is that what, what are y'all?
That's bad.
Radio, roads and jail.
Radio, roads and jails.
I mean, that's our biggest.
Cyber security stuff, but that's going to be either a hundred thousand. It's small.
Yeah.
Well, actually a fifty thousand. And I know we, we talked about the gang warden.
That's.
He said we could do that last time.
That's, yeah. That wasn't a legal, was it? Do I? Law enforcement stuff's not allowed? No, the gang.
Gang warden. He said last time the gang warden.
Yeah. I, I guarantee when he said it.
Yeah.
He's thinking, how does animals have to do with COVID?
What they're talking about, animals might have started.
Yeah.
I, I will say one thing, boy, they're down here every time there's money available to ask for it.
Yeah. But, uh, okay. So I hear radios being, uh, I believe the radio is going to be the number one project. Is that correct?
Yeah. I mean, yeah, but like I say, I don't want to spend a lot of money on it.
Was jail? Did you say jail?
My name.
Radio, roads and jail. And three? Roads?
I think you should do, look at Karen's and Scott's cyber security.
And, and both of those would be smaller than the other projects.
Oh, yeah.
I think Karen's is right. You know, she's got about eight hundred fifty thousand dollar project on it. And I think, do you remember you did your co-file and I had to go to the comptroller's office and put that number in and get it approved? They're actually through the comptroller's office.
Okay. Would, would cybersecurity be in front of Karen's or Karen's behind the cybersecurity? Uh, what?
You lose your network, you lose all that stuff.
So I'm thinking radios, jail, road, cybersecurity, and then, uh, Karen, Karen's. You got.
Radio, jail.
Roads, radio.
We don't have to.
I, I, I wouldn't miss it, but there's some.
We don't have to. I mean.
Yeah. I thi- I think you're going to have to figure out a number.
Well, well, and we, we always remember the chair, if we had not have got this grant, that's what we got. If the grant was out of it, would we spend eight hundred thousand dollars to archive those files up there? We got to spend the money on something we'd be spending on anyway, in case you don't get it back. You got a plate, you got to keep that assurance, isn't it?
You don't get Karen's scan, you pull a folder and file.
All I'm saying is if we were sitting here and we're not getting that grant, would this group of gentlemen say, hey, we need, we need to spend that eight hundred thousand dollars? I don't think we would. Now, I'm not saying it's going to need a big bar.
She could borrow that and Susan.
Which is how, how county clerks sit there. He wasn't all that in the block. And we've been talking about it for fourteen years that I've been here. Get Susan, get Karen to do a verse a little bit of that.
Does she?
No.
But, but she's had money for that before.
Yeah.
Sparks on the social. Yeah. I was going to say, I think. She had one archive file of Sarah, which they, a lot of her money, the archive money that she's getting comes from the cases. She had one archive file of Sarah, she'd say a lot of her money, the archive money that she's getting comes from the cases.
Right.
Well, most of the people in this report go to, they can see, yeah, very few of her cases paid. Most of her cases were not paying taxes. Her real fund, her real best.
I thought there was a joint records certification.
We have to, you know what?
If Karen had come in here at budget times, they had, they, I wanna put a hundred thousand dollars here, we would have probably all considered to, 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 preserving it.
Don't let you do that.
I mean.
So, so, so my list shows number one radios, number two jail, number three roads, number four cybersecurity, and number five Karen's. Is that what y'all got?
Just like Sandy, put roads above anything, whatever font.
Well, that's what, and, and, yeah, and I think that's a fear, and, and, and guys, and, and, you know, we, we just got out of a meeting where we don't all agree, and that's what, in, in the discussion, and I think that's what a lot of the fear is, hey.
Yeah, my great ones, I know, okay, well, just call me later.
I think, I think, uh, a lot of it is that, hey, any, and, and, and I, and I, and I certainly don't intend to offend anyone, but the county feels like if the commissioners can get that money for roads, they're gonna spend every bit of it, every penny of it they can for roads. Is that the, I mean, I'm just, that's, that's the thing?
Well, and, but that's where it's needed.
Well, according to the commissioners, according to the commissioners, that's where-
Transportation and travel is, is, is big.
How much is cybersecurity, Tom?
It was ballpark, eight thousand.
How much?
Eighty thousand, and that's for three years worth, because I was thinking, we got a, we got three years worth, we can spend these funds in, and might as well do three years, and get it all in, and not have to worry about us getting it in for twenty, so, after twenty twenty four. Because it was twenty four, I think, twenty four, twenty five thousand a year.
Yeah.
But they have what they have.
So, if they run out of money, we couldn't just budget for these cybersecurity.
Yes, no, yeah. But I know I'm on it because I'm like, there it should be out here.
If that's important to Karen, then Karen should be in.
Well, now, she asked me if she needed to come to court, and I told her, I said, I will present it.
No, I'm, I'm talking about in her budget here.
Because she just budgets what she has in her, we budget what she has available in her archives on these every year.
Well, I thought she'd come down here, and on that desk, or, or that table, she brought one of them, and she said, I'm pretending to be Vanna White.
She did, and she paid for that with her archive money.
Okay. Did it just do a certain amount, and then that's all, and then she's out of money?
Yes, she spent all the money, she had even that fund, now she's way more, she feel like that.
There's a, there's a plan that her and Susan work together once a year, and they, and they all approve.
When we, and when we do that, it's kind of like you said, though, she does not gain a lot of money in purse.
Okay.
So she has to let you build it up.
And you're saying eight hundred thousand?
Probably, it's like fifty two, where she brought.
Eight fifty two?
If we take care of what's up on our mound, what y'all come up with during the year, is that enough to keep up?
For me, yes, but I don't know about Karen.
Probably not, I would say no.
I don't know, e-filing and everything being digital, you know?
Yeah, one fix, it would be e-recording every care.
Karen, boy.
So going far, she's e-filing everything that away, we just gotta catch up the past records.
Going forward, she shouldn't have a lot there, though.
And once them filing cabinets are off that floor, can that floor be used for anything else we have business with, for the public and everything else, or just a big empty floor?
Yeah, you're talking about that.
Fourth floor, that's all you got. You'd have to do a lot of clearing.
A whole lot of clearing.
Woo, gosh, have you been over there lately? Yeah, but like I said, once we get the file cabinets out, will we be able to use that for everything?
I think that's where Scott, that's where Scott wanted to go.
We talked about some idea, Eric, the security guard.
Once we got security moved out of that room.
I guess, but-
But, but that's the way it always worked, is security was in the room. We moved them out, and we're gonna move them, and, but I, and I'm not picking on you, Scott, we got the same thing in the, in the, uh, emergency management coordinator, gotta have office, gotta have an office, we give an office. Not, not, yeah, and so, it ain't gonna, and it won't ever change.
He sure he was on the third floor, then they moved down to the first floor.
Yeah, and so.
My thoughts were just, we're growing, ain't no way around it, would that be room in the future as we need to grow, we could expand to if we got that stuff off the floor.
Fourth and fifth boats could be used, but it's gonna take some money.
This would be harder, because it's got all the-
Jail sales. Yeah, okay, so I think we've got our list, we got our list, uh, radio, jail, roads. Sorry, you fell below roads, Scott. At least y'all, at, at least y'all on the list, uh, cybersecurity, and then the archives of the, do you have enough money to cover yours?
Yeah, pretty good.
So you, okay.
Process of looking at everything from what Pam had, is part of it that she had done, and I don't know where she was at with that, so we're just now starting to kind of look at that and see how much of it is completed, and when we can finish it out, but I have to.
So you got mine, okay, okay. Is everybody good with that list? Okay.
So he said we needed to start kind of get ballpark figures.
Yeah.
Have y'all got a ballpark on the jail?
I guarantee, yo, uh, Gary Adams can put, he, he can, he'll, he'll be able to put a ballpark figure on there.
Within, pretty quick, too.
Yeah.
He chomped it to bits.
I've been working on trying to round that up, even as, right, coming into the meeting, trying to get more solid numbers on it.
So we're, I guess, guys, if we can get in the position to get ballpark figures on the- I guess the radios, what I hear him saying is, we're gonna have to hire an engineer, tell us what the radio, what, what radios we need?
In the bar.
Engineer, designer, program.
We're gonna have specifications.
Yeah.
They'll give you your specs, and then that goes out there.
But, it's hard to put a list together when the rules are still changing, you know, uh, but, you gotta start, gotta start.
You're gonna have to have a viral impact status on, yeah, sites, on that.
Yeah, so, on the radios, here's what I'd like to do, and I know you put a lot of work in on this, but I would like to get the specs on what we need, and then I'd like to give them to Motorola, and I'd like to give them to Harris, and I'd like to then come back and get out here and tell us what they're gonna do. Basically, what they'll do, they'll hire that engineer, he'll design a system to send the specs out, and they'll send it back. That's what, that's why I was asking about the timeframe and all of that. And we got a ballpark, I mean, uh, Motorola's already given us a price. Well, they've given us, and Harris has given us a price too, but they didn't have the specs. Yeah, and so the price is coming way high, because they didn't have detailed specs. They don't have detailed specs. Once we get those specs, and we get Motorola and Harris, then, then we can talk about who we're gonna use.
They need to kind of come up with figures so that we can say, look.
Yes.
And say, you know, we're, the court won't show up this much money for it.
Yeah.
We're gonna lock this much money for jail expansion, this much money for roads, security.
What time you do those radios for jail, I think we'll probably have a couple of hundred for each precinct for roads.
Oh, my gosh, I'm amazed.
Yeah, it's a joke.
They come in high, you tell you get your RFPs back, you're not even gonna be close on what it is, because without RFPs, they just hop down every category, and it was way high, they were seven and a half million. And then Motorola matched their price, and I asked them, they said, oh, well, it's gonna be seven and a half million, of course, they could see the fit. So until you get that engineer, and then he sends it out, but the reason I wanna get that timeframe, part of that radio project is being paid for by ECOG, I got the top of that, they have found out what was up with all that, and that's gotta be completed by August thirty first, twenty twenty two. And with a three month window from, okay, get started, to, okay, this is what we can do, that don't leave very long to get that installed.
Now, with that, with that list, or it don't include broadband?
Well, on the broadband side of that, we wouldn't spend no money on broadband other than letting them on towers.
Yeah, that's more of a ongoing maintenance, they, we would, we would rent out the power space, broadband, that's an organ that would help us pay for the maintenance of towers.
I think Sandy said, we, we, we're not in the, what, the renting business, or whatever.
You talking about, uh, existing towers, or new towers?
The ones that we're gonna build.
I'm not for building towers, I'm for using the ones we have. Ones we have will support a microwave system.
Well, for, for what, broadband?
No, for microwave, you have to communicate, the way that, that P twenty five used to work, the towers have to communicate with each other, and they use a microwave system for that.
Well, Motorola says that, that they, they can do it with the tires we've got now.
I don't know, he only said that tower wasn't worth.
Okay.
If you start building towers, you're, you're getting into some problems, because the county shouldn't own communication towers, that should be private enterprise.
Do we only announce, Scott?
No, we don't.
Do for our radio or anything, yeah.
We don't want to need them, well.
And I think that's where you're gonna have time, and you're, you're gonna have to recommend it for.
Yeah.
Oh, he gonna say that would be part of it, and if you do the jail project, you want to hire one, it's one of the, that kind of stuff.
You're gonna have to, oh, we want it in.
Anyway, I'm, I'm not, you know, this is just talk, I mean, I, I'm not too much.
Forty five minutes.
I, okay, I think, that's it. He's gonna have to do a study, he's gonna have to dig deeper into that bill, what, what?
And I think you'll have something wrong.
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's-
Phil just popped up, isn't he?
Yeah, he's going to do, do stuff on it. Okay, guys, we'll come up with another workshop at some point, huh?
Well, what happens, what, what does Wednesday after court look like for y'all? I mean, you're, you're all already here, we're all here.
It'd be the best time.
If we didn't wanna work, we shouldn't have hired that, if we didn't wanna work, we shouldn't have hired that, anytime. I work my schedule around what y'all set up, so.
Yeah, Wednesday after court, it's like, but you could get it.
Yeah, then you're like, doctor, that one.
That's fine, we'll make. Okay.
That's true.
Do you want to, just share every four, every two weeks?
Every, I mean-
You're gonna be here and talk the same thing.
Every two weeks, we're here anyway.
Yeah, we're, we're here every two weeks, anyhow, if you just, Mr. Stewart, and a meeting with him, sometime we won't have that much.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Once it gets rolling, we'll-
Okay, you wanna schedule that, Christie? And just schedule it, and I'd say eleven o'clock, would, is that what y'all would do, eleven o'clock, on Wednesdays after, after Commissioner's Court?
That way Tim will be hungry every Wednesday, every, Tim will be hungry.
But you may have broken a snack. Okay, we are in duty.
We need the next meeting, having a agenda vote, this is our opposite list to give to him, or how we move forward from here with that?
Yeah, I think, I think it would be, I think it would be better to go through Commissioner's Court to say up that this is our list of ARP money, this, this is our priority list, uh, but it's subject to change at any point, damn, but I, would you, I think we need to probably run it through Commissioner's Court, wouldn't you? I mean, how would, how would you say, well, how did y'all come up with that list, when did you make that list?
In secret, maybe.
Yeah, that's what they already believe. Yeah, I think it- Yeah, 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 it could change, and then we're not made for it, but at least you're-
I said, it wasn't necessarily order, that's just the things I like to say.
What about these things for the oil?
Jail, I, yeah, it can be jail.
Yeah.
Jail and radio, I don't, I mean, you know.
He did say project, and so, for Commissioner's Court first.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
And a motion, and second, he's in motion.
Yeah, your motion?
So, second.
Third, fourth.
All in, all in favor, say ah.
Who was there, the witness? Wes, Mel.
All in favor, say ah, those are both the same time, we are there.